The October 21st, 2021 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treewasser?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here. Mr. Wolferman, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11th, 2021, and September 1st, 2021, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, please read the doctrine of necessity.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the School Ethics Act, NJSA 1881-21, at SEC, was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct, and whereas the School Ethics Commission has provided guidance regarding the invocation of the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education is not available because members of the Board of Education have conflicts of interest on a matter required to be addressed and voted upon. Whereas the Woodbridge Township Board of Education had a discussion related, is having a discussion, related to and ratification vote on the collective bargaining agreement with the Woodbridge Township Education Association, whereas members of the Board have conflicts of interest that would prevent their participation in discussion related to and vote on the WTA agreement as follows: One, Frank DeLa Pietro's wife is a secretary who is a member of the WTA; Two, Sue Bourdain was endorsed as a candidate for the Board during the 2021 Annual School Board Election by the WTA; Three, Daniel Harris's sister-in-law is a teacher who is a member of the WTA; Mr. Harris was endorsed as a candidate for the Board during the 2021 Annual School Board Election by the WTA; Four, Brian Molnar's daughter-in-law is a secretary who is a member of the WTA; and Five, Jonathan Treewasser's wife, niece, and nephew are teachers who are members of the WTA. Whereas as a result of foregoing, the Board does not have a quorum to discuss or vote on the ratification of the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the WTA, and the Board has determined it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now therefore be it resolved by the Woodbridge Township Board of Education that the doctrine of necessity is hereby invoked with respect to the Board's discussion in executive session this evening regarding the WTA agreement and the public vote related thereto. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, having been read at a public meeting of the Board on October 21st, 2021, be posted in accordance with the Board's standard procedures for not less than 30 days, and that the Board Secretary reflect the same in the minutes of the meeting. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to the School Ethics Commission.
Do I have a motion?
So a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DeLa Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Harris, please read the closed session statement.
I would like to motion for the approval of the following closed session statement: In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Please rise for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence. During our moment of silence, let's keep the Molnar family in our minds. Our Board Member, Mr. Molnar, lost his father yesterday. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justty sprawl.
So a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treewasser?
Here.
And Ms. Anderson?
Here. Mr. Wolferman, please note, Mr. Molnar and Mr. Velez are absent due to personnel reasons. Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings?
So a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. DeLa Pietro.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Wolferman, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Madam President, on October 10th, 2021, we opened IFB 22-15, Sale of Real Property at West Cedar Street and Delaware Avenue in Colonia.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative from John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, Jenica Liang.
Thank you, Madam President. Jenica Liang has made securing an A average in 12 advanced placement and several dual enrollment and honors classes look effortless. Winning first place in the 2019 Congressional Art Competition, Jenica's work hung in the Capitol Building for one year. Jenica's involvement is sincere and consistent. As a valued member of the John F. Kennedy Memorial High School chapters of the National, English, and Spanish Honors Societies, her leadership on our campus is highlighted by working with our robotics team and backstage crew. There she thrives collaborating with like-minded peers toward a common goal. Jenica also serves on our Student Council, American Cancer Society, and key club organizations. She is articulate and has the heart of a true activist bringing issues to the forefront through education, awareness, and fundraising efforts. Jenica lends her talents and spirit unselfishly for others. For several summers, she volunteered both in China pre-COVID and virtually teaching English with the China Your Way Program. There she learned an appreciation for language, education, and lots of patience. She shares this gratitude with her students at the Feng Diao Chinese School where she volunteers as a teacher assistant. In her spare time, she enjoys gaming and recently taught herself how to code. Next fall, Jenica plans to study multimedia design. Thank you for coming.
So activities from School 19, School 29, and John F. Kennedy Memorial High School as of October 21st, 2021. From School 19, during the Week of Inclusion, discussions were held on the importance of respecting all people, celebrating our differences, and connecting through our similarities. The anti-racism pledge was read during morning announcements, and students were invited to sign the pledge on the bulletin board. Students also dropped everything and danced to songs to express themselves and their identities. Additionally, the PBSIS kickoff celebration was held on 10/1. Discussions were held on how we are all husky heroes. We are responsible, we are caring, and we are respectful. From School 29, during the Week of Inclusion, students were assigned a school-wide family project entitled Identity Day. Students learned that everyone is important and needs to be seen and heard. Students created posters with their families to highlight what makes them special. The posters were hung on display in the hallways so that students could take a museum walk around the school to view everyone's creations and learn about their peers. From JFK Memorial High School, the National Honor Society held a car wash raising funds for the MS Society and a canned food drive for the needy. On October 20th, NHS held an evening of celebration with a sponsored Garba dance. And on October 27th, there will be a Walk-a-Thon for breast cancer awareness. On September 24th, the following students were this year's JFK MHS homecoming court: Madison Blackman, Sneha Saravanan, and Michelle Solano, with runner-up Stephanie Yu and homecoming queen Anusha Nayak. Senior Rashna Pandit was nominated and won for Artist of the Week for October 4th to 8th on artssonia.com. On October 7th, students and staff signed the District Anti-Racism Pledge. The following students were selected as winners of the anti-racism poster contest: Grade 9 Sophia Shu, Grade 10 Mariela Rodriguez, Daniela Pajak, and Caitlin Figurito; Grade 11 Lila Mohammed, and Grade 12 Keith Denyla. On October 8th, students and staff showed solidarity against racism and wore black to collectively team up against racism. Abraham Mudasar, President of National Honor Society and an active member of his local Boy Scouts troop, was recognized as the Senior of the Month for September. Gergjak Singh, the JFK Drum and Field Band Major and President of the JFK Chapter of the American Cancer Society, was recognized as the Senior of the Month for October.
Thank you, and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.[615.16][615.16][applause]
I'd also like to acknowledge tonight we have Mr. Postarina, who is the Principal of John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, who's also here to support his student.[631.16][631.16][applause] Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the Superintendent's reports for the month of September 2021.
Madam President, I present the following monthly reports: The Student Registers and Fire Drill Report, Suspension Reports for Elementary and Secondary Schools, the Bomb Threat Reports, and Reports of the Attendance Officers.
Thank you. At this time, the public is invited to speak at the conclusion of each agenda. Comments at this time should be limited to the items on the agenda being presented. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Dr. Massimino, please provide an overview of the graduation profile for the 2020-2021 school year.
Madam President, we had over 1,000 students graduate from our three high schools. Our graduation rates were as follows: Over 95% at Colonia High School, over 94% at John F. Kennedy High School, and over 89% at Woodbridge High School. Of all our graduating students, a little more than 83% are entering colleges, and 17 of our students are entering the military.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations for the Superintendent's Agenda?
Madam President, I have 20 items to present to the Board.
And make a motion for the Superintendent's Agenda.
Do you want to present the annual report? At this time, you can present the annual report.
The Annual District Report of Violence and Vandalism for the 2020-2021 school year. Due to the pandemic, our numbers are, have decreased tremendously. There were 24 fewer acts of violence. There were no weapons reported, no thefts, 35 fewer confirmed HIV cases, and a decrease of 115 reported incidents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the Superintendent's Agenda?
A motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Yes, second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treewasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Madam President?
Mr. Harris?
I'd like to highlight item number three. It's Veterans Education Awareness Week during the Week of Veterans Day on the 11th. I want to recognize and applaud the Administration for continuing our Veterans Day programming that started many years back. That is led by our Supervisor of Social Studies, Mr. Tsakadato, in partnership with the Woodbridge Veterans Alliance, led by Mr. John Eberhart and Ray Oris of the, both of the American Legion 423 in Island. On November the 12th, at least on November the 12th, at minimum, veterans from throughout the township will be coming to our schools, addressing our students, and telling them about their service in the military. So I want to thank those veterans in advance and thank the Administration for keeping this terrific program ongoing. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from the public?
I'm Maris Ford, New Jersey. And just a quick aside, I too offer my condolences to the Molnar family. It's a shame. We wish them well. That's it. On policy, I believe you have as a subset to that vaccination and testing? Is that appropriate to speak to that now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because I confused it one other time, and I wanted to make sure I had it right. A question is, how many employees right now are, or teachers, staff, unvaccinated? And how many have tested positive that were unvaccinated?
Do you have another question?
Yes. What is the cost per test? And is that borne by the district? That's it. Those are the two questions that I have regarding the...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Maris, I couldn't tell you the numbers off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get that for you. And we opted for option one, which is the state program, which the state facilitates and covers all costs of all testing of unvaccinated employees.
Just to be clear, you don't know if you've had to turn anybody away that's tested positive that was unvaccinated?
This is the first week we've done testing.
Okay, thank you. I got it.
So we don't have any of that information at this time.
Appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Dr. Massimino, please provide an overview of the 2021 Advanced Placement and Benefit Analysis.
28 subject area advanced placement exams were offered at the three high schools in 2021. 1,226 advanced placement tests were taken by 694 students in May and June of 2021. We continued our all-in campaign to increase equity and access in evaluating students' potential for participating in advanced placement and district potential for expanding AP offerings with a focus on including underrepresented students. Our district three-year comparison, obviously due to the pandemic, we saw some drops and a few increases in our AP exams taken. Out of the 1,226 exams taken, approximately half, give or take, could result in students receiving college credit. Once they hit a three, a four, or a five, that's when the college will start considering it. These savings, based on records, tuition, credit hour, could exceed $6 million. So that's an excellent number for our students going to higher education. In preparation for the 21-22 school year, 10 advanced placement summer academy courses were offered as a review and in preparation for AP courses. 72 hours of bridge instruction was provided, and a total of 129 students from all three high schools voluntarily participated.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Dr. Massimino, please provide an overview of the WIDA report.
Thank you, Madam President. 2021, we had 461 English language learners tested. They scored an average of 3.5. You need a score of 4.5 or higher to test out of the ELL program. We had just shy of 20% score above this. Obviously, the pandemic dramatically impacted our ability to assist our English language learners. While they did not pass the test at the rate we would have liked, 74% did demonstrate growth throughout their grade levels and academic scores, and we look forward to having them back in person so we can give them the appropriate support needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Ms. Bear, please give an overview of the 2021 DLM test scores.
Thank you, Ms. President. The DLM is an alternate assessment for our specialized programs. These assessments are for students who are not taught using the general ed curriculum. We assessed 73 students, and they are graded on emerging, skill, knowledge, approaching target, at target, or advanced. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Treewasser?
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Amber Jarrett, Woodbridge proper. Can I ask about the AP placement analysis and benefit? Is that part of this?
What item number is it?
It's item number one. Well, I assume it's what Dr. Massimino went over, the AP.
That's fine.
I'd just like a little more information about this all-in campaign. It says it increases equity by evaluating student potential. What, I guess, could you just elaborate? And what is the district actually doing? What steps have been taken to? Because obviously, there is underrepresentation in some of the groups, so...
Are you done with your question?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dr. Massimino?
Madam President, I'm going to turn this over to our Director of DEI, Mr. Ottley, to talk a little bit about how we're approaching this.
So one of the things that we're doing is really targeting our elementary schools, given that in order to address the problems in our high schools, we really have to make sure that students are prepared as early as possible. So examining our criteria for gifted and talented, for PEG, for middle school honors coursework, looking at multiple measures and trying to eliminate any sort of artificial barriers into the programming, I think will create a great pool of candidates for the future for our AP coursework. In addition, we're also looking at what are the prerequisites for these AP courses? Recruiting efforts and kind of a more comprehensive approach rather than just focusing on one specific thing. So the all-in campaign is something that is specific to the AP, but there are additional things that we're examining within the district as well.
Thank you.
I also wanted to speak about the AP results. First, a couple comments, and then I'll have some questions. Just for if members of the public are looking, you know, at the numbers, and they'll see the rise in scores in 2020, the lowering of scores in 2021, I just want people to be clear, if they didn't have a student or know a student that took them, the circumstances. 2019 was pretty normal. 2020, obviously, was the first pandemic year, and it was also a year where the College Board didn't have a lot of time to prepare the AP exams. So the way they were done was online, but there weren't a lot of controls. So there may have been perhaps more extra help that students had in general around the country taking those exams. And it was also a shorter exam for many of the subjects, or maybe all the subjects. This year, still not normal, at least at our school, we took it digitally. I think some districts took it in person. But there, there were a lot more controls. It was much more similar to the original exam, although not exactly the same. And they even scored it slightly differently based on taking digitally versus in-person because in digital exam, you couldn't go back. Once you answered a question, you were done. In an in-person exam, you literally could go back and review your work and re-answer it. So I just wanted to comment briefly on that. One thing, looking at the stats, I mean, it was referred before a little bit about the exams taken based on racist ethnicity. So one question I have is, do you also have a split on gender? For example, like, I mean, do we know are males and females taking these exams at the same rate? Are some students more likely to take exams than others? The other question I have is, the College Board also awards AP Scholar Awards. They have AP Scholar, AP Scholar with honors, AP Scholar with distinction. Do we know, like, how our students are doing there? And to summarize for people that aren't familiar with that, there, for students to take a minimum number of exams, AP Scholar being three, with honors four, distinction five, and then different averages, average three for all exams, average 3.25 or 3.5. So do we know how our district students are doing with that? Because that's obviously, it's not on this report.
Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Pinkowitz, I don't have that information with me, but I'm happy to look at both the gender breakdown as well as any AP scholars we might have had, so I can get that information out.
Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. DeLa Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treewasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda, Mr. Treewasser?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 12 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treewasser.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Good evening, everybody. John Vettari, Woodbridge. Also, what I say, we lost a girlfriend, Bobby Molnar, who we met for 50 years. And I know how to lose somebody, lose somebody like that. I feel sorry for all of us, and of course, the family, and I hope they're strong enough to really realize that what it meant, meant not just to them, what it meant to all the community. So I just want to ask one question over here. We do have insurance, of course. I would like to know the company that insured us, number one. I would like to know the agency, and I'd like to know the name of the agent, please, if possible.
Excuse me, sir. Which item on the agenda are you asking about?
Agenda, it's finance, C.
I'm sorry? What item number?
C, C.
Item...
Finance, Finance and Insurance.
Did you say letter C?
Yeah.
I don't have a letter C.
On the front page over here, that's what I got over here. Finance and Insurance.
I don't see it. Peggy will help you.
Oh, he's reading from the cover sheet of the agenda. That C, Finance and Insurance, will be presented.
Okay, so that means, sir, on the Finance and Insurance Agenda, we have 12 items on the agenda. So of the 12 items, I need to know which item are you asking a question about?
Thank you. For the insurance.
No, this is the Finance and Insurance Agenda. There's no reference to insurance on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Again, Tom Maris, Ford, New Jersey. On item number one, going down to the Food Service Department's bills amounted to $642,039.9. Was that all payable directly to Chartwell, or was other things included in that?
Is that your only question, sir?
No.
All right, ask more questions.
The next one would be also going back to number two, one I follow closely, and that is the $417,851.50 that has to be paid to bring down the bond debt. It's my understanding that currently, that bond debt is, total bond debt for the school is $186,793,000. And what is the current projected time to pay down that entire debt? And will you be taking on more debt during that point in time? Also, this has come up before, and I was told that it didn't occur yet at a town council meeting. The mayor himself admitted that in 2017, he failed to pay the revenues he collected in an amount of approximately $5 million to the Board, and the Board remained silent on it. And he said he paid that back in kind. Since you did not receive that $5 million, I have to assume, looking at the figures that I have, that the $186,793,000 suffered, would be $5 million less had he made that payment. Can you explain why that didn't happen and why this Board did not challenge it? Because the mayor pointed out, if the school board had a problem with it, they would have been there at the town council meeting to question it, which, as we know, did not happen. Thank you.
Mr. Wolferman, item number one.
Yes. Mr. Maris, the amount of the food service bills includes the amount payable to Chartwell's as well as some student refunds for students that had balances that they wanted refunded to them.
Just as quick, just to follow up, if I may. Have you ever done a cost analysis now to see if it wouldn't be better to bring this back in-house, given the horrible performance of Chartwell?
That's not on the agenda. That's not on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine. I'll bring it up at another point in time, but it will be a question, so it'll be coming up when I come back up to the mic at the appropriate time. Now, can you answer the other question for me?
Item number two, pay down the debt.
Thank you, Madam President. As far as the other questions are, the debt service amount, $417,000, that you were asking about, is related to bonding?
Yes.
That we had in the past. The debt service, the timeline of this, and the debt service repayment, we do not expect to have to refinance the bonds only unless we can get a better interest rate. As far as the timing of it, the bonds ranged anywhere from 20 to 30 years. I can get you the exact timelines, but I do not have them on me. And you want me to answer the third question? Yep, Mr. Maris.
If you can, if you can, if you can, you can.
If you can't?
Yeah, what I can say about that is, the like-kind exchange is something that's going on with the township. It does not affect the amount of the bond debt that we have. So, the amount that you see on there would not change with or without this like-kind exchange.
How, I know it's a tricky question.
Thank you.
All right, I'll let it go until another time. Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Harris?
I did wanted to stopine on a couple of items that were asked there. About taking on additional debt, there is no referendum planned. The board is not working on anything at the moment. Debt could only be taken on through voter approval, so that certainly wouldn't happen through this board on its own. And then, secondly, in the audit report, that is where you could find our debt ceiling. If memory serves, it was at least $250 million. So, the debt figure you referenced there is well under the debt cap that a school district can, a school district of our size can raise to. So, I just wanted to make those two points clear. If you wanted to take a look at the audit report, Mr. Maris, you'd find it in there, what our debt cap is. Again, I think it's about $250 million.
Mr. Wolferman?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing on the first question you asked about what we were paying to Chartwell's. That is payable to Chartwell's, but that is also, that is for the food and the milk and the products. It is not just their feed.
Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Security and school safety agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Madam President. The Security and School Safety Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Technology agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Madam President. The Technology Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, present the following one item. I move the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Buildings and grounds agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator, present the following four items. I move the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Transportation agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Equity Commission, Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Madam President. The Equity Commission Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Madam President?
Mr. Sedana?
I just want to express my gratitude to the administrators, our superintendent, Mr. Ali, to the rest of the Equity Commission Committee for adopting Diwali as one of, one of our important days. It's just something that it was, it's wonderful to see that it's happening, because it was always undercurrent and always recognized, but now it's formalized. So, thank you for that. And I know our representatives from HSS are here as well, so they might want to speak as well, but that's up to them. But thank you very much for that, and to the administrators for having an open mind, and, you know, for the Equity Commission to have done this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Harris?
I also wanted to recognize Mr. Ali here. Been on the board for nine years, been a state government employee for 13, and it was the first time I ever had diversity training, something that your office has produced for all of our schools. I believe it's mandatory for our employees. But as a board member, I thought it was important that I take the opportunity. And I want to thank you. It was a worthwhile program, and I know it's the first of many to come. So, good job, and, you know, I appreciate the opportunity.
Are there any comments or questions from the public?
Good evening, everybody. I personally want to first thank for adopting this resolution on Diwali. State of New Jersey has already adopted a resolution on Hindu Heritage Month for month of October. And it's wonderful to see our school district adopting this resolution also on Diwali. As part of this, I also want to thank Mr. Kendall Ali for being a tremendous supporter, for helping us bringing more cultural competency in this school district. And as part of this, we are also bringing in Seva Diwali food drive. And some of the schools have already started to participate into it. And I want to again thank, on behalf of the community, for giving us this opportunity. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, just state your name and just the.
Yeah, my name is, yeah, my name is Abhijit Deshpande, from the, I represent HSS, and I'm in Island.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Madam President. Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, presents the following 37 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Negotiations agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Madam President. The Board of Education Committee for negotiations with the WTA presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
I don't, Madam President, thank you.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the board?
Madam President?
Ms. Bourdain?
I should have said during athletics and extracurricular, and I missed that. I just want to say that I think it's great that the track meet is coming back. It's something for all of the elementary schools to participate in. And I know how much the children enjoy it, and they'll love to have that back. So, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Mr. Harris?
Madam President, I never go silent, do I? I want to recognize a few things this evening. First, I want to recognize our security department. A lot of times, they give shout-outs for different departments. And this one, I haven't identified in a while. It was a report conducted by the security department submitted to Dr. Massimino as part of his superintendent's report. Something I've missed in recent years. So, over the years, the department actively polices the number of students who attend our students, excuse me, who attend our schools improperly. They do not live in Woodbridge Township, and if they don't, they don't pay tuition to the district. So, I want to recognize what was in the report. So, for July through September, 31 active district students were identified and were nicely asked to leave. That doesn't happen by accident, and I want to recognize the security department. I think they're out in the hallway, certainly in the back there. I want to thank you for your efforts. And in doing so, when you do that, what that does is, it's not just, it sounds bad, because we're asking students to go to their home district. What it's really doing is, it's freeing up classroom space in our classrooms. It's reducing the student to class, just student-to-faculty ratio. It's ensuring that resources paid by taxpayers are benefiting our students. So, the calculation of just having those 31 students who are improperly attending our schools, leaving our school district, that the savings to taxpayers is $451,300. And I want to recognize Mr. Small and his team for the job well done. It's not an easy job, from what I understand. They really have to dot their i's across their t's to make these, to make these things stick, if you will. So, I want to recognize that the security department. On my way here, I received a phone call from the NJEA. A friend of mine, I work in Trenton, and the lobbyist called me, and she wanted to put a plug in for nurses. She said nurses, they're on the front lines of our COVID battle. They are battling six students, as they would in any given year. But of course, with this microscopic organism plaguing our country, our world, that they're on the front lines, and they're by themselves. And they are doing the contact tracing, and they are working, from what I'm told, really statewide, from about 6:00 AM to about 8:00 PM, busting their butts. So, I want to give a shout-out to them. They are, they're on the front lines, and I'm sure the rest of the board and administration agree. So, a big thank you to those nurses out there for everything you've done historically, and most importantly, in the past year and a half. And then finally, and then I'll turn it over to other board members. Back in, I guess it was June, I gave a big recognition to Superintendent Bob Zega on his departure. This evening, we have another departure. He's not physically with us, but certainly a friend and someone who mirrored my time on the Board of Education here, and it's Mr. John Bader. If I remember the number off the top of my head, I believe it was 31 years of faithful service to our district. And during his time, the past eight, nine years, as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, a number of really great things happened under him. And I want to just take a brief moment to recognize him for those accomplishments. As we saw this evening, Dr. Massimino did a presentation on the advanced placement scores, and really, the increasing numbers of students who are taking those tests. Something that originated under Mr. Bader and his team and the rest of the district was the first test for advanced placement was for free. And we did that as a board to not only help our students and our families, but also to encourage students to challenge themselves by taking an advanced placement course. And when a student, as Dr. Massimino pointed out, scores a three, four, or five on that test, they earn college credits. And our district, over the years, has tried to measure, what is the impact of that? So, if you were to take an average course cost at Rutgers University, it's, I believe, memory serves, about $3,000. And you were to multiply it by the number of credits that were earned through our students between the year 2015 and today, and it's on the back end of the presentation that I'm sure will be on the district website, that has netted our parents and our students over the past six years, $6.2 million in savings to our parents. That's earned by our students with our encouragement. So, I want to give a, you know, that certainly needs to be recognized. That's a big deal. College is super expensive. I know I'm 35 years old, and I'm still paying for college. And I graduated many moons ago. Also, the SAT is remarkably important in any student's application to college. So, we did two major things with the SAT. First, under Mr. Bader, we started an SAT boot camp. It was sort of a, well, it was a free program for students to bone up and get ready in the math and language arts sections of the test, typically the Saturday before one of the scheduled tests. And that gave all of our students, regardless of their socioeconomic status, sort of a leg up over students in other school districts that don't have such a program. Then also, what under Mr. Bader happened was the SAT being conducted and offered midweek. I always hated, okay, and I still do, I hate the idea that our students, after working all five days of a school week, you know, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday morning, being expected to take a test. By having that test midweek, we're giving our students, for free, a test that they can perform well on, really kind of at their peak performance. And we've seen strong SAT scores as a result of that. Nextly, it came very much in handy in the past year and a half, under Mr. Bader. And perhaps it was really only a matter of time that it was going to happen, perhaps irrespective of him, but it still happened under him. Our district moved to one-to-one devices. First, our eighth graders with iPads, and then eventually, our high school students each gaining their own device. That positioned us as a district of having thousands upon thousands of computer devices accessible to our students. And then the pandemic hit, and we were certainly in a good place. And Mr. Bader, along with his entire staff and the tech team, deserve a tremendous amount of credit for that. Under Mr. Bader, we also started the introduction of American Sign Language, Under Mr. Bader, we also started the introduction of American Sign Language, which is remarkably important, offered in all three high schools. Also, under Mr. Bader, we established, among others, partnerships with Syracuse University and New Jersey Institute of Technology, as two major universities, regional universities, as well as Lincoln Tech, which is a trade school that teaches a number of different career skills, whether diesel mechanic or in the health field. I forget the precise name. And lastly, you know, listen, no one person is ever responsible for an idea to implementation. It takes a team, but Mr. Bader was in charge of a tremendous team that we have over at School Street and throughout the district. So, I wanted to just recognize him after many years of service, and a friend to all of us here, and a gentleman of an individual. John, I don't know if you're watching, but certainly wish you well in your retirement. You live in town, so we know we'll see you. Godspeed. And to your successor in the back there, Mr. Passerino, I very much look forward to you and look forward to doing some great things over the years to come. So, thank you, Madam President, for the time.
We will now open the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Hi, Amber Jarrett, Woodbridge proper. I just have a few follow-up questions in terms of the new food vendor and the termination of the Chartwell's contract. I read the letter as a parent that indicated an evaluation committee was being formed that will comprise of district employees, Board members, and parents. So, my first question is, how will those parents be chosen to serve on the committee? I know past committees under the previous administration, particularly the COVID reopening committee, there were only two parent members on there, aside from people that were also staff members, and they were chosen based on whether they reached out to the superintendent, which, considering what a large district we are, that's not a very representative or equitable way of getting representation and multiple voices and perspectives. My second question is, have you, has the district considered including students on that committee? I would argue they're the most impacted and our most valuable stakeholders, I mean, demonstrated by the fact that a high school student showed up to speak on the topic at the last meeting. I know, as a community member, I participate in an organization called Wonak, and we hosted some town halls with students over the last year, and in one of them, I believe Mr. Ali was there, students actually expressed a desire to see more diverse options in the cafeteria. And I think that's another excellent way to make sure all children are seen and valued throughout the school year and not just during specific times. Third question is, what assurances can you provide that the same issues won't occur with the new vendor? Chartwell's is not the only for-profit company, but I know just, I mean, from a five-minute Google search, I'd like to know how you're going to vet, because all of the information I have was available when you first chose Chartwell's years ago. Their first lawsuit was in, I think, 2012, an $18 million settlement with New York schools, another one in 2015 of $19.4 million. Issues with boycotting in 2014 with students after finding mold and human hair in their food. So, I mean, these, like I said, took me five minutes on Google to find this, so I just want to make sure we're going to properly vet future corporations. I think there's just a pervasive issue with pitting the needs and health of our students with corporate profit margins, but, and then the last, no, sorry, two more questions. What plans does the district have beyond vetting to monitor future vendors? To be honest, you know, parents rose a lot of the concerns, but I guess, as a parent, I'd like to know how that food was continually served to our children in the first place. How were those menus ever approved? They're posted on the district menu. I assume we have a liaison. You know, maybe once it happens without the district knowledge, but after flags were raised, it continued. It even continued after our meeting, the last meeting, where, you know, many parents were here. I sent you a picture, Dr. Massimino, of my own son's lunch, and it was definitely inedible. So, I guess, yeah, is there going to be some way of monitoring and, you know, making sure that these issues don't persist again? And the last thing, I understand, because the district chose to opt into the federal free lunch program, we're kind of stuck for the year, meaning we can't offer a paid lunch program? We, correct? Sorry, maybe don't answer that? Okay. So, I just am curious, because I know a lot of parents have voiced that they would have liked to have a paid lunch, you know, option, and whether the district had considered surveying parents and getting their input as prior to making that decision. Because I know my district does have the paid lunch program, and, you know, the free and reduced lunch for the children who qualify, and obviously, families that are struggling, they've made allowances for them as well. But, I think, you know, we talk about forming partnerships and stuff, and getting input prior to making decisions like that is important. And ultimately, we can say what we want about Chartwell's, but we entrust our children and their health to you, and ultimately, you're responsible. So, I'm done.
Dr. Massimino, can you take these questions?
Madam President, I'm going to let Mr. Wolfman respond to the RFP questions.
Mr. Wolfman.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. As far as, I'm going to try to go through these, one, two, three, four, five. As far as choosing the parents for who will be on the committee, Dr. Massimino and I have not met yet to determine who will be on the committee and how that will be done, but we will in the near future. As far as students on the committee, it's pretty much the same answer. We'll discuss that and see how that can be implemented. As far as the assurances and the vetting, we did hire a food service liaison tonight, so we expect that person to be able to really look at our quality controls. It's something we had in the past. Unfortunately, we didn't have it in recent years, but we are going to make sure by hiring this person, having meetings about it, and ensuring that what happened in the start of this year no longer happens. As far as monitoring the future, the vendors for the future, we certainly, like we said, we're going to hire this, the person is now hired to be starting with us, and we'll have, you know, meetings between them and us to make sure that they continue to provide a proper service to the students. Diverse options, which you mentioned, we certainly will be looking at that at the RFPs as one of the criteria to make sure that the needs of all of our student population get met. And, yes, we did opt into the federal free lunch program. It is something we could potentially look at for the future, but right now, for COVID, you know, it was the best option for right now.
Good evening. Jenny Perez, Avonel section of the township. Firstly, my condolences, my heartfelt condolences to the Mollnow family. I wanted to take this opportunity to applaud the Board for acting decisively on Chartwell's performance and soliciting a vendor that delivers on its responsibility to serve healthy and nutritious meals to thousands of students on a daily basis. Thank you for this week's letter concerning the selection process. I really appreciate how you're including principals and parents in the review process, and I'm confident, I'm confident that the Board and the committee will choose a vendor that is able to deliver. My question, actually, was one that was previously asked. I also, too, was curious as to how parents would be chosen to serve on the RFP review committee. And my second question, I understand that there's a, the township's opening a third teen center at the old Hungarian-American Hall. When is the new Acacia Center opening to students, and will there be transportation?
Mr. Wolfman.
Again, to answer your first question, as far as the committee, we will meet to discuss and determine how to include parents in the future, in the near future. And as far as the Acacia Center, I do know that the township is providing busing. As far as the timing, I leave that to Dr. Massimino.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. Yeah, we actually held one of our principals' meetings there to show the principals what the location looked like, some of the amenities. We spoke with the mayor. We're working in concert with them to make sure we can provide transportation. Obviously, transportation's been an issue for us, like every other district in the state, so we are working with the township to make sure that, once it is up and running, which I don't have the exact date for you, but I can absolutely get it to you, we want to make sure that those interested do have a means to get there so that they can enjoy those amenities.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
John Vatarri, Woodbridge. Just a couple of questions over here. I did spoke to the mayor about his claiming he spent $145 million on the schools in Woodbridge over here, and my question was to him, what are you going to do with the school 4 and 5, they all want, everyone wants, once the new one is finished? And he has no emphasis, it's up to you, Board of Education, number one. Question two would be, what's a student's population in Woodbridge Township? I mean, thousands, anybody knows nearest number?
Do you have another question?
Then, we're going to go up to the, about this new education we're supposed to teach our kids. And I'd like to see something that I just brought from Europe. It's very touching, the people uprising in the rest of the world, and I think we are following behind them. And I saw your book over here that I brought from Europe, where they tried to teach the American kids in our schools in Europe. And people there are refusing to use them, especially when they start to use them with kids four to five years old in kindergarten. And when you see it, I want to see what you read it. There's not much to read, but see what you think about it and where we're heading to. And I said before myself, I'm kind of old, but I did this 60 years ago, more than 60 years ago, went through this, we know what's heading to, and that we're going to fall in a trap, try to teach our kids something that's no good for the kids, no good for the country, no good for the world. And why are we doing what we're doing? Because somebody said so. It's not clear to me, is it just New Jersey that's doing it, or the whole United States is doing it? And if the parents have a right to see before you teach those kids, why are you going to teach them? Do they have a right to tell the kids not to be there when you teach the stuff, they refuse themselves? And the most important is, are you going to grade them for what they're going to, taking time to what they're going to teach them, anything from sex to what do you want to call it? I don't think it's appropriate to teach the young kids certain things that you pretend you're going to do it. And most important, would the kids, if they refuse to do it, would they be punished or some kind of, thrown out of school or something? That's not clear. And I tell you later on, maybe not tonight, but what's happening in the rest of the world, how the American people, their government employees are rejecting this stuff because it's happening in a foreign country. And a couple more things over here. Are the all districts, districts in the state of New Jersey going to learn the same, from same books? Are they all done equally? That's because government says it's implemented, the government wants to say it's law. If you realize that, we as a country, as a state, we have to work together. We can't have one thing in New Jersey, another thing in New York, another thing in New York, because you will create a chaos like we had in Europe. So, that's another thing. And again, if you look at it, COVID, what's not fair, everybody's doing something different. I just came from Europe. I went to hell because everything is different. And what I was made aware of it, that US employees are mandatory to have a COVID shot, and their employees, they are not, because their governments say that they don't have to. And those employees are not just the employees to do the floors, they are security. The first thing you walk through the door, those people are not vaccinated, but people that work inside of, they have to be. And I know an individual that refused to do it, only person in the whole US Embassy that says she don't want to do it, because why do her workers don't have to and she has to? So, the question is, we are just all over the fields, we're not accomplishing anything. And I think that's a shame, and it's just what do we try to do with this? How are you going to, how much longer are we going to use it? How are we going to milk it? That's the question. I've got much more, but I don't want to take more time, so thank you.
Dr. Massimino, one and two.
Sure, Mr. Vatarri. With regards to the new 4 and 5, we're continuing to work with the township on the acquisition of that property. With regards to what will happen, the school district has yet to determine how that school will be utilized, once the new school, you know, once that new school is available. And with regards to your question about student population, we are north of 14,000 students in this district. The number does change every day, but we are north of 14,000 at this point.
That's it. Thank you. At least you're the only one that tell me so far. Every time I meet new superintendent, nobody knows, but you know, congratulations. Just can I?
Thank you, sir.
Give us to tomorrow chairman, who wants to go through it, and please can have it back.
Well, you can give it to Peggy.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Lucy Shaw Colonia. I'm a longtime resident of Colonia, and I've attended the last couple of meetings. They've been really informative, and what brought me here was my concern about what I had been hearing on the news with regard to this critical race theory, also by opposition to the mask mandate and vaccine mandates as well. So, I just wanted to express, you know, that I hope that our future generations will have the freedom that we have experienced, and that I really do believe the mask and the vaccine mandates are anti-science, they're really un-American, they're anti-freedom, and they're against everything that we are. You know, while the country is opening up everywhere, while we're now going to football games and what have you, it just seems punitive to have children wear masks all day in schools from age two. It seems absurd. So, that's just my comment on that. The other thing is, on the last meeting regarding the curriculum on diversity, that's terrific. Diversity is great. We all need to respect and love each other, but I have concerns about, it references unconscious bias and economic disparity, things like that. I think they're really harmful. If we're teaching children that they're either oppressors based on the race or they're victims, that is so dangerous, so terrible, so terrible. So, this is why I'm here. I wanted to know if the, if this curriculum is a result, is this the Governor Murphy mandate, or is this just regular curriculum? So, that's one question. And the second thing is, as far as the sexual part of it and identity, a lot of it seems age inappropriate. It's really, should be, I would say, within the purview of a parent, you know, not the government. And I would just say, you know, we're all in this together, we're all great Americans, we're all God's children, so let's all, let's all love each other, let's do the best we can do. And I'd really urge parents to stay involved, and really, I'm a proud resident of Woodbridge, and you guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bush.
Yeah, just, I think we've said this before, I just want to be clear, you know, the concept of home rule in this state only goes so far, while we have over 600 school districts in this state. There's really very little control that school districts have over the issues that, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, that Lucy described. For example, I'm going to try to answer one or two of your questions on the way. With respect to masks, with respect to the vaccine mandate for teachers, those are both executive orders from the governor, which are required for our school districts, no matter where we are, to follow. As it relates to curriculum, that's a state mandate, and, you know, all of these things technically have a link to our ability to operate as a school district. You know, our authority is given to us by the state, through state statute. If there's not, or executive order or regulation, we can only do that which we're told we're required or allowed to do, and those are very stringent. So, this is, if this is a concern of yours, and clearly it is, and we certainly respect that, it's something you should speak to your elected officials about at the state level, not necessarily here at the Board of Education, although we certainly like to hear what you have to say, something that you need to express at the Trenton level as opposed to the Woodbridge Township level. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Woods, New Jersey. I'd like to start out by offering my apology. Ms. Anderson may have known that I put it up on the internet and social media, because at the last meeting, I kind of had a little short-temper remark, and I do apologize for that. I understand you try to maintain decorum, and in that regard, I think you've been one of the most outstanding chairs that I've seen. But I took umbrage at the fact that the attorney for the Board was interrupting citizens. I feel it's not a place to do so. That should come directly from you or a Board member, not somebody that's hired by the Board, even though they are the legal representation. I think that violates Robert's Rules of Orders, and it's just out of order. It should be that we're here to talk to the Board. If he has advice to give to you, and you want to say something back to the public, certainly that is respectable and should be the way it goes. So, that's why I was a little tiffed at that, and there was another comment he had made when I was engaging Dr. Massimino in a conversation, and he said, "We don't want to have that kind of debate going back and forth." And I think that was kind of the trigger for what set me off later on, when he told me to, "It's my turn to sit down and be quiet." But anyway, I wanted to get that out of the way. Again, I offend my apologies to anybody that was offended. And moving on, I want to also take a moment to thank the President's Council, who typically would hold for only candidates that were running a candidate's night. Unfortunately, that will not transpire this year owing to the COVID and, I guess, some other difficulties that they're may having. But, again, in the past, they've done an excellent job, and I think it was a great service to the community and the voters to have a chance to view any of the candidates in a discussion, and I'm sorry that we're not going to be able to do that. I'd like to thank Ms. Jarrett and the other lady that did speak about Chartwell. I think those points were well-taken, and I do hope that they will go ahead, this Board will go ahead and get another committee formalized that will share in the review of whoever is chosen. But speaking of Chartwell, it was a terrible debacle, and I heard tonight that you're hiring someone new to oversee the food service, yet in fact, you have an employee right now who supervises transportation and is also responsible for the overall oversight of food services within the district. And that person's been on that job for about nine years. I'm not going to criticize them, because I think that may have actually been an overreach on the part of the Board, putting that much pressure on one individual, because just trying to handle the bus load, the transportation load for a school system this size is horrific. And I have a lot of experience in those types of things. So, I, someone was there, obviously, they were not doing the job for whatever reasons, and I'm not casting dispersions on them, but I do hold the Board responsible that this whole thing has happened, and I said that at the last meeting. Ultimately, the questions you were asking, you should have had those answers. Ultimately, the questions you were asking, you should have had those answers known to you from the get-go, if you were monitoring Chartwell the way you should have been. And I hope we don't have to go through that again. I started to ask earlier this evening if you've made a comparison, or would make a comparison, of bringing back the cost-effectiveness of bringing the food service back in-house. Once upon a time, not all that many years ago, we had what we called the Moms, and the food service seemed to be much better, we had far fewer complaints. And can you do or will you do an analysis to see if the best way to go is hiring another outside concern or bringing it back in-house? I'd also like to know if there are any board members who have family working for Chartwell or have had family working for Chartwell during the course of Chartwell's service to Woodbridge Township. Moving on, on masking and vaccinations, I was asking before what had happened. Obviously, it's too new to go into the vaccination status, but have you had many problems related with the children to all-day masking? Has there been a problem with that? And if so, how extensive has it been? And what were the nature of those problems and how they were resolved? And finally, I want to speak again to DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I want to make a comparison. There's a lot of things going on in our town. Talk about diversity, and I'd like to give this to Peggy, the secretary, at the end. It's something that appeared in the Washington Post, it's an analysis of the 2020 census, and it shows how Woodbridge fares since 1990 to 2020, and how the demographics have changed by each section of the town. And I'm not going to use it all now, because I'll run out of time if I continue to do so, but I want to present that to you, and it's a big factor. I also want to say that we have Dr. Ali, who was brilliant, when I read his resume as far as math is concerned, and yet we're failing in math across the board on all our high schools. We're terrible. And I have more records, but again, I'm going to run out of time, so I won't be able to speak to it. But to take someone like Dr. Ali and put him over to run DEI when his services are so badly needed in an area that we really should be concentrating on, and that's real-life situations, not ideologies, I think that's a terrible mistake. Thank you.
Mr. Maris, with regards to the in-house food service, that was far before I was superintendent, so it's certainly a discussion that I'm happy to have with the board. With regards to any family members, that's, I wouldn't know that. Chartwell's is a third-party vendor, so I don't know who their employees are related to or who they're not related to. Regarding student masks, the students are wearing the masks, they've done an excellent job. I have to say, I'm quite proud of, you know, how they've handled it, and quite honestly, it's absolutely wonderful to have them back. And in terms of DEI, our current math supervisor also has a background in math, and I don't think Mr. Ali, being the director of DEI, precludes him from weighing in on any decisions we make curricular. The goal here in, under my administration is that the central office administrators will work with the supervisors hand-in-hand. The idea is to be collaborative. I think everybody brings with them a different perspective and a different background. So, you know, I'm quite certain that when we do look at math and Mr. Callahan, I'm certain he'll do a fine job. There would be no reason why we wouldn't speak with Mr. Ali and get his input the same way we get other central office administrator inputs on other curricular institutions.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to mention two things back, if I may, very quickly. I believe any member of the board who had a family member working for Chartwell would have to disclose that. So it should be something that is readily known. You may not know it personally, but they would have to recuse themselves from any voting on anything that was dealt with Chartwell. And they should be so named, and they should identify themselves as to who they are and if they in fact had a family member working for Chartwell during this point in time. I agree with you with, we'll get into, at a future date, the information that I have about where our schools stand, and also, as I said, I will readily give you something that shows the diversity that we're looking at as far as our community. And we are changing rapidly as to far as the mix. Thank you.
You got it. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Sub motion, second.
Have a motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Treewasser. All in favor?
Aye.
She carried.